Hi everybody, Adrian Fontes here. Did you know that the Democrats of Greater Tucson has a website, thedgt.org? And if you subscribe, it's only 20 bucks. You can support this great weekly communication where folks get together. Sometimes there's candidates, sometimes folks like me pop on to help understand what's going on in the world. The Democrats of Greater Tucson, thedgt.org. Join up today.
Hey Chris, welcome. We're glad you're here.
Yeah, well, thank you all for having me. I'm honored to be here today and look forward to speaking with the group. I am live on the Equal portal, so if anyone in Ward five would like to sign my nominating petition, they can go there and do that.
Great. So let's everyone give a warm welcome to Chris Elsner. He's our guest today and he was born in Pine Top Lakeside, Arizona and moved to Tucson in 2011 to attend graduate school for U of A after serving for two years with the Peace Corps in Ukraine as an education volunteer. He earned a BA in English from Northern Illinois University and his Master of Public Administration degree and graduate certificate in entrepreneurship from U of A in 2013. He's worked in a variety of roles at U of A and currently runs the Peace Corps prep program, encouraging students to pursue careers in public service. Chris met his wife Lexi, a native Tucsonan during their mutual Peace Corps service. She's a U of A PCC and NAU alumni. Almost covered all the bases there, huh Chris? They have two children together, an eight-year-old daughter and a five-year-old son. Chris has been committed to public service and servant leadership and has worked with the Tucson community in a variety of ways since moving here. He served as a board member with Tucson Young Professionals for several years and with SARSEF. He's tried and to get a couple of startup companies going over the years, learning a lot in the process and getting to know our local startup community during that time. He was recently elected to his third term as President of the Return Peace Corps Volunteers of Southern Arizona, also known as the Desert Doves, a local nonprofit membership organization supporting returning Peace Corps volunteers in our area. Over the past few years, he's been building community and trying to bring people together. That's been his focus and he wants to prioritize that as a council member. He's interested in exploring ways to get Tucsonans more involved in local government through participatory budgeting and forms of digital democracy. Chris wants to ensure that the city is responsive to the needs of its residents, that people feel like they are being heard and that local government is working on the best interests of our community. Chris recognizes that Tucson faces many challenges going forward, including housing affordability and accessibility, upgrading public infrastructure, ensuring adequate funding for city services and public safety, and making sure our community is resilient and adaptable to climate change. He also worries a lot about the future of our country and community with the unconstitutional, illegal and corrupt actions of the Trump administration and understands that we will face many unforeseen challenges in the coming years. Chris, that is quite a resume.
It's a start.
And the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Joe, for that wonderful introduction. Yeah, I am an Arizonan. As Joe mentioned, I was born up in the Pine Top Lakeside area. I lived there for a time when I was young, spent some time living in Southern California, moved back to Pine Top Lakeside and then moved to the Northwest suburbs of Chicago for about 12 years before attending undergrad where my mom's family is. That was the Northern Illinois. After that, I did my tour of service in Peace Corps where I met my wife. It was a wonderful experience. Happy to share more about that later if we have time and if you'll have questions. Obviously, Ukraine has been in the news quite a lot the past few years and especially in the past week. Unfortunately, I wish it was not really in the news. You know, to add on to the educational component, you know, I did get the Masters of Public Administration from U of A. I'm very proud of that. But something I don't always include, but I think is relevant to some people is that I'm also a high school dropout. So secondary school, K-12, did not really work for me, did not get along. You know, I think if high school had started maybe at 9:30 instead of 7:30 in the morning, particularly in the winter in the suburbs of Chicago, I might have been more inclined to attend, but I didn't. So I ended up getting my GED and then going to a community college. And it was that community college where I really discovered that, hey, I'm here because I want to be here. I can study the things that I want to study and I had really successful first semester. And they invited me to join the Honor Society Phi Theta Kappa, which is the honorary for two-year schools. I'm like, wow, high school dropout, got invited to the Honor Society. That's pretty cool. So I got really involved in that and that really opened my eyes to, you know, leadership, servant leadership, working at the community college. I was elected student trustee there. Was really involved in a lot of campus organizations and that's, I think, where I really discovered a passion for public service, serving my community. At that time, it was my fellow community college students. During that time, it was about 2003, which is also corresponded with the Iraq War and led some peace protesting and anti-war activism in my community. Went to Washington DC to protest the Iraq War. It's the only time I've ever been to DC. It was an 18-hour bus ride there. They dropped us all off on the mall. This was, you know, definitely before smartphones. I think I had a brick phone at that point. And we marched around for a few hours in, you know, 20, 30-degree weather and then at the end of the march, looked around like, wait a minute, where's the bus? Where do we go? How do we get home? And then spend about the next four hours trying to find familiar faces from the bus so we can conglomerate together and find our way back to get on the bus. So that's my one experience in Washington DC. I hope to go back on better terms sometime and visit and we take the kids and show them around. And that was my taste of protesting. And unfortunately, you know, at the time for protests, it didn't feel like it had an impact. We had like 300,000 people march on Washington during that protest and the war still happened and, you know, our country has not been better for it. But that really laid the groundwork for me to be politically involved, to, you know, agitate and advocate for things that I believe in. I think I was a little bit more confrontational in my youth, as many people are, and since I learned to temper that a little bit and be a little bit more pragmatic. But it really drove home again, that commitment to public service and servant leadership, which was one of the main reasons I chose to apply for and serve in Peace Corps. You know, and again, I can talk more about that experience, but I think a lot of Americans really don't appreciate other communities. They don't see the world. They don't understand other cultures and societies. And a result, we're all too often suspect or susceptible to demagoguery and fear-mongering and othering of others. And so, you know, it's an issue and I really recommend that more people serve in Peace Corps. I imagine most of the folks on this call are pretty well aware of it. But unfortunately, most of our young people are not. Probably 75% of the students that I meet at U of A have never even heard of Peace Corps. So there's definitely a desire among young people for public service to be engaged. When they hear about it, they love the fact that they can travel, that they can help people, that they can feel like they're making an impact and doing good in the community. But it's also kind of a shame that they have to leave the country to do that and that there aren't more ways to get young people involved in the community. And I think there's a myriad of reasons why young people are not as connected. Community is a big struggle, I think, for young people these days. It's all too easy for a lot of young people to just kind of check out of online conversations and communities. They don't develop a lot of conflict resolution skills. You find somebody you disagree with and you just block them or ignore them rather than having to deal with, you know, the problems or challenges that they have with those people, with the community. And as a result, I think that really leads to a fragmentation of young people. And we, you know, have seen a lot in the news and in the media, sort of the fragmentation of our, you know, media ecosystem. Lots of people kind of live in their own little reality bubble. You know, I myself am a little bit guilty of that. I work at U of A. I have an advanced degree. Most of the people in my immediate network also have advanced degrees. There's a lot of perspectives and things out there that I don't necessarily understand, but my commitment as a candidate is to make the effort to go meet those people and to understand them. You know, because of my background, I grew up as an only child with a single mom. So I really appreciate, you know, working class and all the stuff and sacrifices that she did and made to provide opportunity for me. And other people need those kind of opportunities too. But as a result of that, I appreciate hard work and I appreciate that different communities have different perspectives. I've lived in more rural communities. Pine Top Lakeside is obviously very rural. The suburbs where I lived in Illinois were a little bit more rural, conservative than what you might typically think of the Chicago area. You know, my dad, I do know him. I didn't really grow up with him, but I did visit him. He was a rancher in Southern Washington. So I had some time in an even tinier rural community. He lives in town of about 500 people and spent, you know, my summers up there helping him with the steer and the ranches and, you know, some of that work that he was doing on his property. So I really gained an appreciation and respect for different cultures, different society, you know, different members of our society. Growing up in very diverse schools, always appreciated those things. And so I really feel like as an individual, I can meet people where they are and cross a lot of cultural socio-economic boundaries and have a sense of perspective on talking with those people. As I mentioned, or as Joe mentioned, I moved to Tucson in 2011 to attend graduate school at University of Arizona. And now I have lived in Tucson longer than anywhere else in my life. So this is home. My wife and I bought a house in the Rio Chico neighborhood in 2012. We have a couple wonderful lovely children that go to our neighborhood school up the street, Robeson Elementary. And we've really made a home out of Tucson and I love Tucson. There's so many fantastic things about our city and our community. But we have some challenges and we have some problems that we need to address, you know, going forward. I think there's, it's been remarkable to me that even with an advanced degree, and my wife also has, you know, degrees that we have struggled from time to time to, you know, get by and have issues with our, you know, family. I remember when both of my kids were pretty young, looking at the cost of having two children under five in childcare was about as much as they were paying me at U of A. So I ended up leaving my job there to pursue one of my entrepreneurial ventures, but also be a stay-at-home dad. It kind of worked out that that was just before the pandemic and so I was a stay-at-home dad for a couple of years. Because the cost of, you know, childcare was just too prohibitive even with two working adults. You know, we like our house and it's comfortable. We're lucky that we have a house and we have a place to live and roof over our head and that we were able to afford to do that at the time. You know, I don't think my house is nearly worth what Zillow says it is right now and housing affordability has really impacted a lot of people. I know a lot of returned Peace Corps volunteers that have gone to graduate school at university and these are couples, individuals coming out with advanced degrees that are struggling to find a starter house to get started with their family in our community. And that's really unfortunate that, you know, even people with advanced degrees, higher education are struggling to find opportunity and find a place to make home or to make Tucson home. I can only imagine how much more challenging it is for working families, people working two, three jobs just to put food on the table and put a roof over their head. And I think we need to do a lot more to understand where those people are at and cure their concerns and find ways to support them. That leads to my commitment as a candidate and what I'm really passionate and focused about is listening to and serving the community. I'm a progressive Democrat, no hesitation about that, but I'm also very pragmatic. And as an elected official, my mission is not to always advocate for my personal beliefs per se, but to really listen to what the people are saying in the community. I want to actually represent those individuals and the people in the community to hear their concerns, to then use my skills and expertise and experience to make sure that those concerns are heard and translated into effective policy and regulations and, you know, action at the city level. Because I feel like too many people are not being heard and it's a big source of frustration for many, many people. And I think one of the reasons why the November election went the way it went is because people are pissed. They don't think people, our politicians are listening. I think the Democrats unfortunately are especially suspect on this area and we need to do a lot better job of reaching out to people and not just listening to our own kind of information bubbles. You know, I would also point out that a lot of the people and voices that we do have that are engaged are people that have the opportunity to engage. You know, not everyone has the time to go to a four-hour mail-in council meeting on a Tuesday night when they're, you know, working other jobs and trying to put food on the table. Not everyone has the time to, you know, spend an hour paying attention to the news to really know what's going on, you know, in our community or, you know, what's happening in the nation or how that impacts them. You know, there's a lot of people out there that just do not have time to engage with the ways that we present to them to engage and provide feedback. And so I am very interested as a candidate and as a city council person to find ways for us to be more responsive to the people that we serve and find ways to make government more responsive. You know, I don't have access to the Vote Builder Network yet. One of the many things I'm trying to figure out as a first-time candidate. But this weekend was my first experience going out and knocking on doors, just in my neighborhood. And so without targeting specific Democratic doors, I was just knocking on all the doors that didn't have a big gate or an angry dog or blatantly, you know, signs that they would not want to talk to me. And I heard a lot of interesting perspectives, not just from Democrats, but from independents, from Greens, the few Republicans that were willing to talk to me and didn't tell me to get the hell off their property. Thankfully, that only happened once. And so, you know, the issues that keep coming to mind are, you know, roads are a perennial issue in Tucson. I myself feel this. I'm a cyclist. I commute on bike from my home in Rio Chico to U of A and the roads suck and they have not gotten better. And I know we had the bond initiative a few years ago to start improving roads and some progress has been made, but you know, too often people don't feel that in their community because their roads in their neighborhoods are not, you know, nice. They're not being repaved. So I think we need to find ways as the city to, you know, be more effective in terms of how city programs, how grants, how infrastructure is built, maintained, managed and constructed. Because so, so often the stuff just takes too long and when people don't see it, you know, one person put the nail on, you know, on the head that, you know, I voted for all of these sales tax increases over the years for the various bonds to do stuff for parks, for do stuff for roads. Now they want me to vote for 414 and do more sales tax, but where is all this stuff? Where, where, I don't see it. And if you're not, you know, really traveling around Tucson, you don't see it. It certainly hit certain neighborhoods and some roads are nicer. Some amenities have been added to our parks and things like that. But I think we need to do a better job of communicating those things to the community and also reaching people where they are. You know, as I was mentioning, not everyone can attend meetings like this. Not everyone can go to their neighborhood association meetings. Not everyone is going to read the newsletters that the city council or that the city puts out or that their ward puts out. So we need to think about how we can reach people where they are to communicate what's happening and then also see what's on their mind and collect their feedback. I believe very strongly that the public sector and government should be a force for good and I think we've really strayed away from that in the country over the, you know, past 10 to 20 years. The way I frame this is when a big corporation does some harm in your community, releases a toxic product or steals from its customers, as an individual, there's very little that you can do about that. You can go try to hire a lawyer, but good luck. People need to understand that the public sector and that government specifically is our best single place to resist and push back against corporate power that often wants to just extract as much profit from the people as they can at whatever cost. And their incentive is only to make money. It's not to serve the people. It's not to make our communities better. It's not to help anyone necessarily unless those things can be subservient to making profits. And so we really need to emphasize the importance of the public sector in that regard and help folks understand why the public sector is important as a citizen, as an individual. But if our system is captured so much by money and by politics and by big corporations, it's really hard to push back on those things. You know, technology, I think many people see as a source of harm in a lot of ways. In a lot of ways, I think it is harmful. Social media has had deleterious effects on our communities, on our youth. I have seen it in my personal life and really made a conscious effort not to really be on social media because it is quite toxic to my mental health. And I think we should really be pushing back strongly or more strongly about that. But when you have the owners of all the biggest social media corporations on stage with the Trump administration, you know, swearing in, it's really problematic on how are we ever going to regulate that? How are we ever going to, you know, reach those people? And I think one of the ways we do that is by really focusing and emphasizing community and really providing opportunities for the people in our community to come together and to incentivize them to come together to do that. Because the more we know our neighbors, the more we have a sense of community, the more we can, you know, have a shared perspective of what's working and what's not. And I think as a result of that, we can better focus on the public sector and help the community understand why the public sector is a force for good in their lives and not just a thing to tell them what to do and take their tax money with no return. So those are a lot of the things I'm thinking about kind of at the broader level. I also think we need to reform our electoral system. I'm a big advocate for open primaries and ranked choice voting. We really need to, I hate to say it, break the back of the two-party system. It is a duopoly and it shuts out a lot of voices and a lot of people aren't being heard in that process. And I think when we have partisan primaries, it pushes everyone's to the extreme and it shuts out a lot of people. There are more independents, I think, in Arizona than there are Democrats or Republicans. And those people, you know, you know, they kind of have to find a party to suit their needs, but we're not really reaching out to them, I think, as well as we could to embrace their thoughts and opinions. And so that's why I say as much as I'm a progressive Democrat and fighting progressive values, I'm also pragmatic and want to meet people that are reasonable on the other side and come together with them to find solutions for our communities. At the end of the day, I'd much rather work with a Republican to put together something that will move our community forward and make things life better for the people in the community, even if it's not exactly what I want and it's not exactly what they want, if it's better for the community and it helps solve problems in our community, I think we should seriously consider those, you know, things and work with people to find those solutions. Because when stuff doesn't work, people are frustrated, people are angry and that frustration and anger can be taken advantage and hijacked for nefarious purposes as we are seeing and have seen in the past few years. I really think we need more support for public campaigns and public funding for running for office. You know, it's, I'm having to front some money to run as a candidate and figure out a lot of this. It's been remarkable to me as somebody who's, you know, pretty on the ball and has, you know, an advanced degree, just how complicated it is running even for local office like city council and all the hoops you have to jump through. I can't imagine how much more challenging it would be for somebody without my experience and education to do that without a lot of support. And I think that also kind of ties into some of the challenges that we face as Democrats. And it was, I think, a conservative on one of the podcasts I listened to who said, you know, one of the reasons that the Republicans have been successful is because their constituents, their loud voices, their people elected their candidate. Their party did not want Trump. Their party fought against Trump for a long time, but the people wanted him. They pushed him forward. They forced the issue on the Republican Party. And we've seen that that, you know, for better or for worse, has had, you know, success for the Republicans. Arguably worse for our country, but good for them. I think as Democrats, we too often fall into the trap of it's this person's turn to run. They've been in the system for a long time. It's their turn, you know? They have the support from all the other politicos. This is the choice of the party. Now everyone, you know, who's in the community, let's get them behind the person. And I think that's exactly backwards. I think we need to find people in the community who can garner support and get support from the community and elevate those people to be our elected officials, to be the champions of the party. Because otherwise, we're always going to be disconnected from our communities. And when we're disconnected from the communities, we're just not going to win. We're not going to have success. Those are things I'm passionate about and I know not everyone here may agree with me, but, you know, I think it's country and community before party. And if as the Democrats, we need to give up some of our power maybe to make our community, make our electoral system better, then I would be all for that because at the end of the day, I want a better future for my kids, for your kids, for your grandkids, for all the families in our community. And it's not, you know, what's in it for me, what's in it for the Democrats, what's in it for my political party? It's, it's what's in it for us, what's in it for the community? How do we build a better future? How do we solve the many problems that our community is facing? You know, and I think there is a lot of competition for attention out there and I think there's been a lot of people talking about this as well with engagement. And, you know, so much of the media, social media, you know, the internet, YouTube, all of the, you know, the things that people got smartphones. Everything is vying for your attention and almost all of those things vying for your attention are incentivized to make money and they want to just get to the bottom of your brainstem as quickly as possible to make sure that you are engaged staring at whatever their app, service or platform is as much as possible so they can sell as many ads. So we really need to find ways to cut through that noise and engage with people. So I would love to see us work with school districts across Tussans and ban cell phones in K-12. Just flat out, no, no cell phones in K-12. They have a horrible effect on students' focus. I think even adults, you see this a lot, our ability to focus on things for any length of time has really been diminished over the years. And we need to help people understand the horrible impact that that sort of engagement and that competition for engagement for our attention is having on us and on our community and how it's driving us apart. And I think we can do a lot better in terms of communication with that.
Well, I see people do have questions in the chat and I'm sure people also want to ask you questions directly. So let's open that up, Joe. Is there anybody who has their hand up yet?
Not yet, but I'm sure we will.
That's a feedback in the chat.
Annex property when it can't adequately offer patrol services to the citizens inside the city. My inclination should be probably not. If those people want to join the city, if they want to be part of the city, then, you know, we could approach that, but I think we already have challenges with our public safety and infrastructure. Response times are, you know, ticking up and that leads directly into Prop 414. I don't like sales tax as a way to collect revenues. It's horribly regressive. It hits, you know, the working-class families and people who can least afford it the hardest. It is not my go-to for how the city should be raising revenues.
Well, as far as I know, that is like the only way that the, the city can raise revenues besides some inposts and excise taxes. You know, do you have other ideas?
I don't and I'd love to know other options for us to raise funding. I, you know, somebody said, well, we have this rental tax that we don't really use. Like, eh, that's still kind of the same problem of hitting the same people who can least afford it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's basically a sales tax just on services.
I think at this point, I am reluctantly for Prop 414 because I think we do need more investment in public safety, more, you know, support for our police, more support for our police and fire departments. We need more support for housing services and housing affordability. You know, we can live five to six minutes without oxygen. If it takes eight minutes for the ambulance to get there, that's a, that's a bad day for everybody.
Exactly.
I wish there wasn't a stupid flat tax at the state level that hanged strong us. I wouldn't wish the state legislature wouldn't preempt cities' abilities to do, you know, lots of innovative things, taxing Airbnbs, finding innovative ways to generate revenues. And I think as a city, we're going to have to think real hard and try to come up with other innovative ways to try to find funding, generate funding, build partnerships. Because my guess is that we're probably not going to be getting much support from the federal government over the next two to four years. And our problems are not going to go away and they're probably going to get worse in a lot of ways. And, you know, I want to meet with the community and I want to find ideas for how we solve some of those problems. And I think reaching out to more people in the community is the way we want to be find some of those solutions, the problems. But if we're not talking to a lot of the community because they're not in our party, because they're independent, because they don't have time, we're going to be missing a big part of the picture there.
James follows up his question about four and four with a question. Have you done any analysis of the city budget? Are things that you have noticed that are of interest or you're concerned about?
I've not had time to do a deep dive on the city budget at this point. I know that a lot of our funding is restricted because of how funding comes in vis-à-vis road taxes, bond initiatives. You know, we can't take money from a bond initiative paying for roads to then funnel it into the police. I'm not sure I buy the arguments that the city's funding is horribly inefficient or unallocated or not allocated effectively. I think sometimes people fall into the trap of anytime the government, you know, spends money on something and it doesn't work, that, oh, that's waste, you know, fraud and abuse. But there's lots of entrepreneurs out there. There's lots of companies that, you know, spend some money to, hey, let's, let's see if this works. We're not going to know unless we actually invest in it and see. And I think we need to give the public sector a little bit of space to try out some of those things and accept that not all of those things are going to work and we don't really know until we invest a little bit of money in them. Okay, folks would like, bunch of hands, bunch of questions.
Yeah, we got Suzy Anderson has her hand up.
Yeah, we got, uh, Suzie Anderson has her hand up.
Uh, failure is probably one of the best teachers. So if we're, if we don't try, we don't fail, but we don't learn anything either. So how do you think we can, uh, affect change in the legislature? So that cities in Arizona will be able to do the things that they need to do?
That's a good question, and I don't know what the state Democratic Party's plan is for flipping more legislative seats. I, I know we had some success in LD seventeen with Kevin Boak, um, flipping one of those seats. I have a feeling a lot of it was just a bad cycle. You know, too many people were pissed off and angry and we weren't listening. I think it goes back to something I said earlier about making sure that we have candidates. That are supported and brought forth from the community and that are not selected because of their political connections. Or because they're an insider or because they've been on somebody's campaign staffer for 10 years. I think we need to have people that can actually speak with authenticity, authenticity for needs of the community. To really rally support and we need to reach across and, you know, try to find those independents and the people that are kind of. You know, middle of the road and, you know, might not agree with all the things that we want to do, say, as a progressive Democrat, but. You know, at the end of the day, there's usually more we can agree upon, even with people across, you know, the aisle from us with differing perspectives. Then we disagree upon, and I think focusing on the things that we do agree upon is probably the best place to start and start. Building back that trust and that collaboration, um, with people across the spectrum.
Where are you? Uh, what are your thoughts, uh, about reducing firearm violence in our community?
Yeah, um, so I was actually at a, uh, university where there was a shooting, um, before it was like super, um, widely, um. A commonplace. So I was at NAU, uh, in two thousand eight, uh, when somebody came in on Valentine's Day and, uh, shot up a lecture hall. And killed four of my fellow students. Uh, I was a few buildings over, um, get out. You know, try to get a text message like, is there might be a shooting on campus and, you know, the cell phone networks obviously were not as robust then. Uh, you couldn't even call anyone. You were lucky if you can get a text through, um, in the next hour or two, the skies were just inundated with news helicopters out of Chicago. Uh, and they hovered over the school for a good, you know, six, eight hours, um, and so helicopters still kind of send a tinge down my back sometimes. And, uh, unfortunately Valentine's Day is always a mixed holiday for me, uh, at this point. It, it problem hasn't gotten any better since then. Um, I don't own any firearms, but I have done shooting with my friends. Um, I don't necessarily think we need to jump straight to banning lots of different firearms, banning assault weapons. I don't know that that's ultimately where we will end up. But, you know, I think there's a lot of agreement with common sense things like background checks, like safe storage, um, like red flag laws. That we can still push on and be more reasonable allow that, you know, again, finding those areas where we can agree. That we're not, you know, trying to say, oh, we have to ban everyone's guns and take them away and you can't have assault rifles and everything. And I think we need to shift the messaging like how we want to make our, our community safer. We want to make our kids safer. And that means we need to have some regulations and controls around firearms, um. Because they are potentially dangerous. And I'm not saying that, you know, if you feel safe because you have a firearm in your home and that gives you a sense of security that we want to take that away from you. Um, but at the same time, if you have kids in the home, there should be some expectations that you'll keep those firearms safe. Um, there should be, you know, liability for parents or people who have unsecured firearms. Those firearms get out and they are used to commit crimes, shoot up a school. Those people should be held accountable, uh, for that. You know, I think we have a lot of issues in Southern Arizona with straw purchasers and firearms going to Mexico, fueling the drug wars and, you know, the cartels. That's obviously an issue, you know, the county tried to do something about that with the straw purchases and. When they just got struck down by the Superior Court, so that they can't do that, because I guess counties can't do anything about that. Yeah, but I think starting on the things we can agree upon.
Arizona, Arizona legislature is very hostile to local communities doing anything about it. Pretty straitjacketed. Uh, I also saw a question that, uh, I don't know if it was, oh, there it is. Um, yeah, what's your view on addressing homelessness in Tucson? It's a, it's a big issue.
Yeah, that came up in a bunch of conversations that I had over the weekend with people that people are pissed about the homeless. They don't like homeless people going through their trash. They don't like, you know, the trash that homeless people live behind in the communities. Uh, they don't feel safe in the parks when they, you know, go out in the evening and, you know, the copper has been stripped out of lights. It's dark and then there are people living and sleeping in the parks. I think it's a sore spot for a lot of people in the community across the pers, you know, spectrum. That being said, I don't think we necessarily need to have an overly cruel approach to dealing with homelessness. Homelessness is also a complicated issue. Not everyone is homeless for the same reason. You know, there are certainly people who have addiction, mental health problems that are out there, people who are on the streets by choice. But there's also a lot of like senior citizens and veterans who live on fixed incomes, live on benefits. Their rent gets jacked up because, you know, the price has been fixed at the apartment complex. The landlord just wants to make more money. They can't afford to do it. They don't have any slack in their, um, their monthly income and now they're out on the streets. I think for people like that, there's a lot more opportunity to provide services and support in a opt-in way. That those people will probably, you know, looking for those kind of services, looking for some help. For people who are in the throes of addiction, um, I think it's a different challenge. Uh, somebody who works in the mental health addiction rehabilitation space that I know told me that. One of the big problems with fentanyl is that for the people who are addicted to it, that's the best damn thing in their life. And good luck trying to take it away from them. They're not, they're not interested in getting clean because that is the best thing they got going for them. And when they're high, that is the peak point of their day, uh, and they will do anything and everything they can to get back to that. People really struggling with addiction, maybe we need a little bit more forceful approach to get them clean, to get them rehabilitated. You know, at the end of the day, I don't think anyone is born a criminal. I don't think any child says, I want to grow up and be an addict. But if we don't have opportunities, education, ways for people to find a path, a way for people to find meaning in life. They're going to find something to do and we're might not like what they end up doing with that. Um, so I think we need to maybe be a little bit coercive in some of the, you know, homeless population and. Get them on the path to rehabilitation and solving addiction and giving them another alternative for something that they can do. Uh, I think everyone probably wants to have meaning in life and feel like that they are, are doing something worthwhile, um. In life, at some point, it's pretty crappy if you don't have that and you feel like you, you don't have purpose, you don't feel like you have anything going for you. And unfortunately, there's a lot of despair, I think, in our community because there just aren't as many opportunities. Education is not as affordable, um, or great as it could be or used to be. Um, housing is hard to come by, um, you know, good housing is hard to come by, um. Just putting food on the table is increasingly hard for a lot of families. So I think we need a nuanced approach. I think we are on the right track with working a lot of our community partners. I like kind of the housing first model and, you know, building more, uh, affordable housing, more, um, supportive housing for communities. But again, it comes back to like, it takes so long to get those things up and running and built. Um, and, you know, part of that, I think, is there's lots of pushback from local neighborhoods. They don't want, you know, affordable housing. They don't want a homeless shelter in there. The people who show up to the zoning planning commission meetings are the people that have the time, capacity and luxury to be able to go and push back. They don't necessarily represent the whole community, but they sway the conversation and make it harder to actually solve the problem. Um, so I think we need to listen to the broader sense of the community. We need to continue working with our community partners. You know, Prop 414 would help with some of that. Um, I think we, you know, having more community service officers that can respond to calls, um, that come in dealing with homeless. Having more services to get people out of homeless situations or unhoused population would be, uh, helpful as well. Um, and, you know, there's, there's a lot more to be done, um, and I don't know if the problem's going to be fixed overnight, but we got a lot of work to do.
Yeah, well, in that vein of, uh, you know, housing availability and, and housing affordability, uh, what are your ideas for increasing the housing supply? Here in Tucson to address some of those issues and relieve some of the pressure?
You know, again, I think we run into the state legislature, uh, on some stuff we could do. Um, I think it would be great if we could have a cap on how many Airbnb's that are in our community. Um, I think it would be great if we could limit corporate buying of residential, single-family homes. Um, it's super annoying when, you know, hedge funds come in and they buy up all the single-family homes. They, you know, put them on a, uh, you know. Twice removed, three, thrice removed, uh, management company, then they put all the listings onto a platform where they can collude and control and jack up rent prices. None of that should be allowed to happen in our communities, but we don't really have the power to, to push back on that. Um, I think the community, and I don't know how we would do this because it would be. Hard to fund, but I would love to see sort of a, um. Creating opportunity where we can promote jobs, training, skills, training in the trades. Uh, giving young people in the community where higher education is maybe not the path that they want to take. The opportunities to learn the trades, have a public independent agency that would build affordable housing. Bringing those young people in, training them in those skills, um, subsidizing them with housing. I think, you know, and to actually build more affordable housing, having the city be a, you know, public equity investor, so to speak, in those companies. Um, you know, if a developers can make plenty of money doing that, why can't a public agency make a little less money and support the people working for it? And build the homes at a more affordable, uh, cost point. Again, you know, probably butt into Realtors Association and developers and, you know, lots of people that would be opposed to those kind of things, but. I think there's some stuff we could try and see how it works and, you know, push on those, um, those envelopes and push on those boundaries and, um, see what we can make happen. I think, you know, Habitat for Humanity sort of has an interesting model that I think we could scale and replicate where. You know, you go and you work with Habitat for Humanity, you volunteer, you help build houses. Uh, you put in your sweat equity with that organization and then you can get on the list to buy one of their affordable housing units that they build. Um, and have like a simple interest mortgage or a much more affordable way to get into that house. But they're asking the people to put in the time and the energy to support that community to build the housing, uh, that then provides for the community. Uh, and I think as a city, we could replicate some of that, uh, and expand that.
Very nice. Um, so, uh, there's a couple of questions about immigration. When I saw that in your community survey, you asked, uh, whether Tucson should remain a sanctuary city. And immigration is a hot button issue and Rod Norris in the, in the chat wants to know. Uh, what's your thoughts on immigrant deportation and involvement of local law enforcement and the deportation efforts?
I think as a city, we have to follow the law. I think the Biden administration was doing a fine job following immigration law, uh, as it was. They had effective ways to provide order to deportations, to getting processing asylum seekers. I think obviously our immigration system and laws have been broken for twenty, thirty, forty years. Um, and the Republican Party has a vested interest in not fixing that problem because it is a great thing for them to, uh, campaign on. Um, and scare people and fear monger about. I think the city has an obligation to follow the law, um, but I don't think we need to, um, go along with, uh, illegal. Corrupt unconstitutional dictates or executive orders from the Trump administration. I feel like if the ICE, uh, Homeland Security DPS wants to work with the city, they need to force us with a warrant or a court order to do so. I think we should do everything possible to keep our local law enforcement, Tucson Police Department and, uh, Pima County sheriffs. Out of that, that is not their purpose. Immigration is a federal issue if ICE, you know. Has the need to come in and, um, you know, be cruel to people. We can resist that as best we can, but I don't think we should be supporting that in any way. You know, I don't have to worry about that with my family because of the way I look. But as a father, um, I can't think of anything more terrifying than my kids just not coming home one day because they get picked up. Or me not coming home and my kids being like, what happened to dad? I think, you know, maybe some of you saw the story of the Venezuelan mom a few weeks ago who was picked up for going too slow. And her and her two kids were deported, uh, to Mexico, Panama, somewhere, um. And, you know, her husband and her other two kids are stuck here and they had no idea what happened to them for a few days. That is just unnecessarily cruel and vindictive and it, it doesn't make our community safer, uh, in any way, shape or form. And it sucks and I, I don't know that we can do a lot, but I think. We're on the right track and finding, you know, or empowering the city attorney to work with local organizations to file suit. We think we need to partner with people, find people in the community with standing to sue and push back on these executive orders and policies that come with the Trump administration. Uh, and fight as much as we can in the courts, um, because that's really all we can do until the, uh, you know, the next elections in twenty twenty-six.
I, I noticed you, uh, you mentioned that you were interested in some reforms, uh, on Tucson elections. And, and one of the things that the legislature has been pushing us on is, uh, off-year elections, odd-year elections, uh, and ward-only elections. Do you have thoughts on whether those aspects of Tucson elections should be reformed and if so, how?
You know, I think with the city of Tucson, we maybe are a little bit stuck in Democratic group think. And I don't think it would necessarily be a bad thing if we had more independents and more Republicans as viable contenders in the races. I still think, you know, we have the, you know, the majority Democratic tilt in the city. Um, but it might not be the worst thing in the world if there was a little bit more back and forth on the city council about issues, um. And things that are happening in the community. And I don't love that we have the city electoral system that we do. Um, I really wish that independents could just as easily get access to the ballot, um, in a lot of the races as Democrats and Republicans can do. You know, it was sad that the open primaries initiative did not pass in November. Uh, I thought that would have really helped to alleviate some of those problems. So, you know, I don't love how we do our city elections. I, I think it would, you know, there's some ways we can improve that. Vis a vis ranked choice voting and open primaries, uh, with that as well.
Okay, um, that was specifically about the, the wards, the ward-only election where you do the primary in the wards and then you do a citywide election. Uh, there's been a lot of controversy over that in the last couple of years. How do you feel about that aspect of our elections in particular?
I don't enjoy it. I think it's, um, you know, to win the Democratic primary, I have to go out and only really talk to Democrats. And people in there, because Republicans, independents can't really vote. Actually, I'm not sure, maybe independents can vote in the, uh, the wars, you know, they can sign my petition. I don't know that that's the healthiest approach for how we run government. I don't think it is responsive to the needs of the community. Yeah, and I, I, I don't like it very much, but it is the system that it is. And, you know, it's unfortunate that all of the, or most of the races will essentially be decided in the Democratic primary. And therefore there's very little incentive for Republicans, libertarians, independents, Green Party people to run. Um, you know, we're not going to agree with everything they say, but there's probably some stuff we can agree upon from, you know, with those people. There are decent moderate Republicans out there. I know some of them that, you know, also don't like what's going on in the Trump administration. And if we're shutting out those voices, then all we're going to hear are the really loud, obnoxious people on the far right. Um, who dominate Republican politics. Uh, if we don't give a space for the people in the middle to talk and communicate and share their ideas. We get what we get and, um, I don't think a, a lot of people think that's working very well these days.
I have a question for Chris Mike. Uh, if you thought about, uh, shared services between the city and the county?
I have not thought a lot about that issue specifically, um. I don't know that it's a bad idea to collaborate, um, with the people in our region. I think, you know, generally speaking, collaboration is better than, uh, competition and conflict. So if there are opportunities where we could effectively work with the county, um, on services, maybe road construction is one of those things to have a more, uh. Collaborative approach on how we maintain and, uh, rebuild our infrastructure. Maybe that would be a great thing to look at. Um, I know in South Tucson, they have some issues supporting their fire department, police department, you know, it's a small jurisdiction. Um, you know, and there is that kind of already collaboration or, um, you know, contracting services between. City of Tucson and South Tucson for those things. Uh, I'm not opposed to those. Um, you know, I think if they can help the community, then there's something we should look at.
Yeah, there's some cities, they, they have what they call municipal government. Uh, Indianapolis is one where the whole county has police services. Uh, there isn't a distinction really between the city and the county. Uh, in Las Vegas, law enforcement is one, it, it's a sheriff's. Uh, department as opposed to a sheriff in a Las Vegas city police department. So, um, i- is I've talked to, to more people about this. Uh, another area could very well be fire protection. Another area could actually be parks and rec. Um, so kind of a, a good thought to keep in mind.
Yeah, we're already doing it in libraries.
Yes, we are.
And in transportation.
That'd be great if we could have more overlap with the county and the city on that. You know, I know there's some parks that are run by the county. There's some parks that are run by the city. And if you want to make a reservation for Ramada and One, you go to one's website. If you want to go make a reservation for one, you go to the other website. Can probably, you know, combine services and make those more effective, um, and responsive with, you know, less overall overhead for running to duplicate of services.
We're running out of time, so I got to get you on the record, uh, about RTA next, uh. How are your feelings about RTA next since we're on regionalism right now?
I think the city needs to get, you know, more support out of what we put into it. Obviously, city streets are a major issue for a lot of people. And if our needs are not being met through RTA, um, then we need to look carefully at that. You know, like I said before, I think it's generally better to collaborate than. You know, like I said before, I think it's generally better to collaborate than compete. On the other hand, our sales taxes are also ticking up, especially if, uh, four fourteen passes. And so, you know, maybe there is an alternate path there, um, to be honest, I haven't dug super deep into that issue. I'm kind of aware of some of the sticking points with RTA, um, but I haven't, you know, done a really comprehensive analysis of it. Um, or what the particular complaints or pros and cons are, uh, one way or the other for the city, the county and the region.
Well, there's a lot of money at stake, still probably get a lot of questions about that.
Yeah.
Right, I don't see any further questions in the chat or any hands up, Joe, so.
And Chris, thanks for spending time with us today, I, um, but I, you know, really, as we wish all our candidates. We, we wish you well, we salute you for running and uh, you come back no matter what, okay?
Yeah, I look forward to seeing you all again soon and hopefully I can make it out to your next happy hour. Um, and really appreciated you all taking the time, uh, to listen to me kinda ramble on about some stuff, hopefully it was making more sense than not. Um, and resonating with you all and, you know, if I said anything controversial or stuff you don't like, reach out, let me know, I'd be happy to chat more, uh, with you about it. So, thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Yeah. Thanks for coming, Chris.